Call this meeting in order. Tonight, we're going to be led by Mr. David Nipper.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, free, open, and just as strong.
Thank you, Mr. Nipper. I'd like to welcome everybody to this last meeting for, I guess, this year's board year, I guess. So, I'd just like to tell Ms. McLeod, I appreciate the job she's done on keeping us in order on everything. And I think this is every quarter, fourth meeting, right?
Yes.
We've been good. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. McLeod, and what we'll do, she'll go down each policy, and then we'll hopefully get a motion second on each one, just take them one by one.
Legislature's been busy.
Somebody's been busy, I don't know if it's good or bad. Ms. McLeod, I'm going to turn it over.
If nobody objects, we have Mr. Johnson here for the discussion of the contracted bus service, which is number 19. We can move that up first, so she can go if she wants to, if that's okay with everybody.
Everybody good with that?
So, we move to that next one, that policy, Contracted Bus Service, 3.4005. And what I have given you, first in your packet, is a copy of our current policy. And then behind that, which is a one-page document, is a copy of the new draft that we have from TSBA. This came about as a suggestion from Fisher Boyer, after some discussion with Fisher Schnell, about changing the way that we award bus contracts. And so essentially, we would be going from four lists to two lists. And the way that we do that, and I let Mr. Schnell explain what the differences will be in those two policies.
Probably it's best for me to quickly cover what's present, and then go from there to show you the difference. Right now, we have a first list, a second list, a third list, and a fourth list. First list is made up of those drivers for the counties that have been driving for one full school year. The second list is made up of those who are substitute drivers, or part-time drivers, who have been driving a school bus for one full school year. The third list is those drivers, or those individuals, who have turned down either the first or second list, and now want to be considered again. And the reason they turned it down, for whatever reason, was it wasn't in the right area for them, it wasn't financially responsible for them, so that's the third list. And then the fourth list is the current contractors that are put in a lottery drawing and put in order based upon the lottery drawing. So that's the first, second, third, and fourth list. The proposal is to change that to only two lists. That would be the first list, and the second list, which would be drivers who have been driving for Rutherford County Schools, instead of one year, would be for two years. And the second list would be those contractors who would now like to have another bus. Once again, they would be put in a lottery drawing, and put in an order based upon their lottery drawing. And there would no longer be a second list, or part-time substitute driver list, nor a third list. However, if you turn one down from being on the first list, you could certainly turn around and put your name back on that first list the following year, just like the fourth list is now. If you were on the fourth list and you turned one down, you certainly can be back in the drawing the following year. Now, I guess, part of the purpose for that, of the change, is as we get bigger, grow from the standpoint of number of sizes of buses, we found that the more, as well as the cost of buses. Buses now cost anywhere from $100,000 to $110,000 for a ninety-pack of the bus. As this cost becomes ever greater, we found that individuals who have more than one bus have a better opportunity to maintain, to lower their general overhead, as well as it provides a way for a backup plan. In the event one of their buses goes down, if they've got several buses, they may have a spare bus. Or their route may be beside their other route, so that bus can then be used as a backup. So, the purpose for the change was to increase the number of contractors who have more than one bus. Now, in the proposal, it puts a limit to the number at six. No one, at the present time, has six. The highest is a five. Any questions?
Motion for approval.
The proposed policy also eliminates the board's responsibilities of bus owners' section. What is the intent there?
It won't be eliminated. That, that grabs it, just to show you the changes.
Oh.
That part will stay in there.
Okay. Any pushback from this, from drivers, or what's the consensus, or at least the general feeling there?
General feeling is that they like it, they accept it, they would like that. That means currently, there's sixty-three people on the fourth list. So that's the number of contractors who wanted to be on the fourth list. And of course, the closer they can get to be into the first list, then they like that. I've not had any pushback from that.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
So we'll move back now to the first of the agenda. And the majority of the first seven policies are on your agenda because of changes in legislation. So the first one is your tolerance offenses. And what you have in your packet is the revised draft. And you'll notice on page one, under assault, this is a change in state law, where it used to say, "Any student who commits battery," as defined in Tennessee Code. It now, the law requires it say aggravated assault. But battery's really not used in Tennessee anymore, so it's really just updating the language there. And the second addition is the next category, electronic threats. And that is the new law, which most of you have heard about at the TSBA legal conference, said if a student makes a claim with a weapon, it'd be an electronic device, and it causes disruption, and that would also be a zero tolerance offense. So that's a requirement.
Move for approval. A motion by Mr. Tackett.
Second.
That's second by Mr. Young. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next policy is 3.507, physical assault leave. And this is a new policy, again required by new legislation, that requires us to allow a teacher who has absent from duties as a result of personal injury caused by a physical assault or other violent criminal act committed in the course of their employment duties to receive that leave, and then any compensation benefits that they would be normally granted directly. And just as a side note, we've already been doing that. It's not anything that we're not accustomed to, we just are required to have a written policy now.
The number, the tag number there, one of the two, has been trans, something's been transposed. Which one is it supposed to be?
Oh, yeah, I think it is supposed to be five.
Five point?
It'll be 5.307.
So the policy is correct, what you've got there.
Ms. McLeod, on the permanently disabled from returning to work, would that be a worker's compensation issue, not a social security?
Well, for the county, it would be our OGI program.
Move for approval. Motion by Mr. Tackett.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blair. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, the next policy is 1.108, and that is nepotism. And again, this is required by state law. You can see, starting in line eight, these are the new sections. Whenever a person is considered by the director of schools for initial employment in the system, that person is related to a member of the board, the director of schools, an administrator in the system, accounting commissioner, or any appointed or elected official, the relationship shall be publicly made known to the board prior to the employment of such person. And in the second section there, if a member of the board has a relative who is an employee in the system prior to voting on any matter of business that may have an effect upon the employment of the relative, the member shall declare such relationship. In making such declaration, the member shall certify his or her vote, and the pending matter will be in the best interest of the school system. And again, those are required by new legislation.
So move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Blair, second by Mr. Blankenship. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, next is 3.202, emergency preparedness plan, starting on line 11. The new requirement under the law is that a file will be conducted within the first fifteen days of school, and that an intruder bill be conducted within the first thirty days of school, for those who've been added.
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Holliday, and a second by Mr. Nipper. Any further discussion on this?
Does this require outside law enforcement assistance for the intruder? Or is it just in the house?
We use our SRO teams to help us set that up. I don't know if it's a requirement, but we do.
I don't think it's a requirement, but we generally, they usually try to incorporate, you know, other agencies so that we're prepared in case that were to be necessary.
Anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, number five.
Okay, next is 6.200, attendance. The change is over on page three of the policy, under excused absence. Starting on line twenty-two, principals shall allow up to ten excused cumulative absences per year for students to visit a parent or guardian during a deployment cycle. Previously, it has been required, but only if they were, not if they were mistakes, we had to grant it, but now it's, even if there's any mistakes, we have to grant those ten days.
A motion by Ms. Blankenship.
Second.
Second by Mr. Young. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, number six.
Okay, next is 6.316, suspensions. And a couple of changes in this one. On line seven, on the first page, we did not previously have a definition for expulsion in our policy. It was in the TSB model policy, so I thought it was a good time to incorporate that, since we did not have it. And that is an attendance, removing attendance for more than ten consecutive days. On the second page, number twenty-three, starting at line twenty-three, this is a result of new legislation. If, as a result of investigation, a principal or miserable day to the new find that a student acted in self-defense, under a reasonable leap that the student, or any another to whom the student was coming to the defense must, may have been facing a threat of imminent danger or serious bodily injury, the student may not face disciplinary action.
Finally, some common sense in legislation. Finally. So move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Blair, and a second by Mr. Nipper. Mr. Holliday?
In the definition of expulsion, this is not remanding the student to one of our alternative settings. This is removing them from the system completely. Okay.
Anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, number seven.
Okay, 4.301, is intracollegiate athletics. And this is the policy we've all heard talk about, whereby homeschool students are allowed to try out for public school athletics. And the statute that's related to this simply says that if your athletic programs belong to an athletic association, that you shall adhere to the rules of that athletic association with respect to homeschool students. So the portion that's been added to the policy that's recommended by TSBA on line 11, bylaws of the Tennessee Secondary School Athletic Association shall regulate the operation and control of secondary athletics. TWST regulations, which we are a member of, which are schools, require us to allow independent homeschool students to participate, to try out for intracollegiate athletics. So that means they have to be a true independent homeschooler, being homeschooled by a parent or guardian. It's not the church-related or umbrella. It's a very limited selection that this actually applies to at this point.
What other homeschool would you have?
By far, I think Mr. Oden can maybe elaborate, but most homeschool students are affiliated with a church-related organization. They do, they get curriculum and materials from an organization, or a real school.
As a Tennessee statute, unless it's changed, it's just two things. It's called church-related or independent. But the church-related do, it does include a number of organizations, I think it might be that.
And this would just be true independent homeschool students.
And parents, and that's the ones you have to have a certain possible degree, or that sort of thing, before you get high school diploma. There's actually less than that. It used to be you had to have some college before you could teach a high school, but that's changed now, just with the high school diploma. My question is, we have middle school athletics, too. Did that statute address TMS?
It doesn't address it specifically. It just says, "If you are a member of an athletic organization that regulates and controls, then you have to adhere to those rules."
So if we just say Tennessee Secondary School Athletic Association, well, that, do we need to also include the middle school?
I don't think so, because that, the middle school is a subsidiary of TWST. So, TSBA feels like that is fine.
I guess we've got a choice, doesn't matter. Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Young. Second by Mr. Tackett. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, number eight.
Okay, if we can kind of take the next two together, that'd be 1.802 and 6.304. The first one is Section 504, ADA grievance procedures. The next one is student discrimination, bullying, intimidation. And what you have on the top is the current policy, and should be the recommended revision. The reason these two policies are on the agenda is that we had a complaint filed with the Office of Civil Rights, probably a little over a year ago now, that we're just now getting to the resolution of. One of their conclusions about that complaint was that our Section 504 and ADA procedures and our student discrimination, bullying, intimidation policies were conflicting, and they were confusing for people to figure out where to go to file complaints. So, we previously did not use TSB's law policies on these two topics. We had kept our own policies when we did our policy review and overhaul. At this point, I'm suggesting that we use TSB's law policies. They've already been reviewed by the Office for Civil Rights. We shouldn't have any issues there. The one change that we are going to make specifically in our policy is that 6.304 will not contain the word discrimination at all. It will only address bullying, intimidation, cyberbullying, BCA, and harassment, because the discrimination part is covered in the ADA procedure. And the complaints for that would be filed under that policy, and not the bullying policy.
I don't have a revised 6.304. Am I due to meet?
Can we just have the revised?
Or, did I understand correctly, 6.304 will not have the word discrimination?
It will not.
Okay, mine does.
I probably gave you the wrong copy, I'm sorry. But that's essentially what will change, is that the discrimination section will not be included in that policy, because it's covered in the other policy. And just as a aside, we have to submit these for approval to OCR as a part of our resolution process. So if we don't get approval, then we'll be back again with some revision that they recommended. But I've talked with TSBA about it. They said they consulted with OCR about similar issues, and that they feel like we should be okay if we use their law policies, with that one exception, since that's specific to our complaint.
Make sure I got this right. I think I got the same thing Mr. Holliday does here. The student discrimination, bullying, intimidation. So what you're saying on line six right there, discrimination, that whole six through twenty is going to be taken out?
That discrimination part title will be taken out. And then that next line, what it would say is, I'm sorry, I think I told you wrong. No, I'm sorry, that's right, that's right. That section would be eliminated in terms of discrimination. Because discrimination complaints would be filed under 504 and ADA, rather than under the bullying policy.
The whole six through twenty would be fixed out.
So move.
A motion by Mr. Blair.
Second.
Second by Ms. Blankenship. Mr. Holliday?
So student discrimination grievances would be filed under 1.802?
Correct.
Are we changing the title of the scripture term as well on top?
We are.
So just, it was in the end, it was like bullying and intimidation?
Well, actually, you say bullying, intimidation, cyberbullying, I think that's the whole title. But cyberbullying was added last year, so that title will be changed to add that as well.
So for the discrimination, you have to apply the code?
Well, the ADA in 504 is based on, is discrimination based on disability. And so, as you see, those definitions of 504, and definitions of disability act, both definitions are virtually still contained in regard to many of these. And that's for disability-based discrimination.
Well, we're taking that intimidation, too.
So all the references to discrimination, the whole policy, we've deleted, wherever that correction is.
Someone's already done that.
The references to disability discrimination will be eliminated in 6.304, or any reference to harassment based on disability. Those are contained in the 504 and ADA policy. The other references, I'm sorry, I didn't clarify that, to discrimination based on sex, race, or ethnic, or religion, will continue to be in 6.304. Only disability-based is what's going in 504 and ADA.
Disability only.
So the diff, I'm sorry, I didn't clarify on that. The discrepancy was, under ADA, in 504, you're talking about disability-based discrimination or harassment. So those categories will be moved into that, are already incorporated in that procedure, and will be removed from 6.304.
Mr. Holliday?
To say that back to you, to make sure I understood. 6.304 will eliminate discrimination based on disability, because discrimination based on disability will be comprehensively covered in 1.802.
Correct.
But discrimination based on sex, race, ethnic, or religion will remain in 6.304.
Yes.
Got it. Do we already have a motion?
Yeah, a motion by Mr. Blair and Ms. Blankenship.
Is it a comprehensive motion for both?
Good covering both of them. Any other discussion? You good, Mr. Reed? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, number ten.
I have a correct copy, it's in your board's agenda as well.
Okay.
4.204, summer school. And this change came as a recommendation of our instruction department, starting on line three. Only students who are residents of the Tennessee Department of State and policy are allowed to be resident, will be permitted to attend summer school. And Mr. Daygo is here, and he clearly explained that. Where those students, if they're from outer county, and they're here, and they go to summer school, where, what school they belong to, and what school they're reported to. So he's got it, and he explains it where he skipped our, for summer school.
I'll tell you a little bit what the change has been. We have had in the past, when somebody would come in, maybe was not the custodial parent, but lived in Rutherford County, we'd allow them to go to our summer school. Because that parent, one of the parents resided here. What you have going on now, basically, is because of intercourse testing and all, we wind up having to put the kid in our database. And they have, and they wind up being assigned to, well, the state tracks it. They wind up being assigned to whatever zone that student's parent happens to be in. If that student happens to return to their, another county, or somewhere where they are, or another place, and does not go back to school, then it's our dropout. It counts as our score for that and all. So, basically, what you, what we have done in the past, we've kind of held an open arm to take others that might come in, that haven't been our student all along, but take them. We, for many years ago, we'd cut out anybody that was from another county that didn't, wasn't coming here with a parent, or something like that. But anyway, that's, that's the cleanup that you're looking to do, that is truly your students. It's kind of a shame the state and feds have made it so complicated, that this is, this way you are.
So we're eliminating outsiders? Any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Holliday. I got a second by Ms. Lee. Is that correct, by Ms. Blankenship? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. I'm going to tear Ms. McLeod.
I think we skipped family members, which is 5.305. And again, this is required by new legislation on page two, starting on seventeen, line seventeen. Taking up to fifteen days of leave is been filed with a colored letter, remember, who is on short-term temporary rest and recuperation leave during deployment. It had previously been filed.
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Tackett, second by Mr. Blair. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, number twelve.
Number twelve is 1.703, attendance zones and exemptions. And again, required by new legislation, at the bottom of page one, Section B, adjourned exemptions. We are required to provide an open enrollment period for adjournment exemptions. And Mr. Oden and Mr. Evans, they decided that our period should be from February 1st through April 15th of each school year. Parents may request that his or her child attend a school, which consists of other than when their child is on board. And then we added this section, after this open enrollment period, zone exemptions may be considered by the director on a case-by-case basis. We're required to designate a time.
That's what we used this year, if you remember, when Mr. Evans came to you earlier for resuming in association with Stewart's Creek High School. But we're required to publish a date now.
Open enrollment is still a sometimes confused term, in that it's only if the seats are available, correct?
Do we need to say application period? Instead of the word open?
I would, yes.
Would that be clear to them, that now that you bring it up, I can see that?
I, I think it would be.
Does the statute say open enrollment? Is that, see, that's why, if we're not locked somewhere, it sounds better.
If it does.
If it does, we can always say open enrollment before applications, to actually give it a guarantee.
We can just say after the designated period, if you want.
I just didn't know what the statute said, we had to do that. I would just.
Open enrollment sounds like they don't have, that guarantees.
That is not a zone.
If you said after the designated period, that's covered. After the designated period.
It's the new law, required by the school system to develop a policy designating an open enrollment period. During this time, parents may request transfers from their children to attend other schools within the district who have available space.
So open enrollment for application, is that what you? So open enrollment for application, is that what you're suggesting?
Zone exemption applications.
What do you think, Angel? Mr. Reed?
I think after the designated period, comma, zone exemptions may be considered by the director on a, on a case-by-case basis.
But I think that Mr. Holliday is also talking about the open enrollment wording in that proposed change, right? But that eliminates it. That's the only place where it's mentioned.
So it would say after the designated period, comma, zone exemptions may be considered by the director on a case-by-case basis.
With that modification, I move to approve.
Motion by Ms. Holliday.
I second that.
Seconded by Mr. Niff. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Do we need to go back to number twelve, Angel? Did I miss something?
Yeah, we missed.
Reporting student progress.
Okay, reporting student progress in that policy, um, as you can see in line one, this also comes from the instruction department recommending that we designate, uh, rather than during six-week grading period. That's progress report shall be provided at least once during each grading period during the school year. We added that second line as well, the progress report will be sent home mid-grading period. After Mr. Oden and I discussed, we decided that it may be better to leave that second sentence out. In case that needs to be changed at some point, but, uh, that it would be sent at least once during each grading period.
Everybody understand that change?
Some move.
Motion by Mr. Blair.
Second.
Second by Ms. Blankenship. Any further discussion on this?
Do we not have, uh, or, or do we have any guidelines or is there any reason for guidelines as to how we send that home? Because there may be more efficient ways to send it via electronic mail or, uh, or more secure ways. You know it's getting there or you're more assured, or if we sent it via email and somebody says, well, I didn't get it because it was email. I don't know if we necessarily need to address that, but I don't want somebody to come back and say that we didn't address it.
I think one of the problems you run into when you put it in the hand of a student, it, it has the same probability of getting home with a report card sometime. But the software that we have, when we get to change away from STAR, a parent can log in and actually do it daily, weekly, kinda how they wanna look at it. But, or STAR's not been very efficient at that. And I'm sure when that replacement is made, parents are gonna have much more access than they've had before. On a much more regular basis, so, um. The one reason we didn't say mid-grading period because we're now in a nine weeks, I don't, whether we wanna wait nine weeks or it might be in some instances. At a school and you decide, hey, after three weeks, we don't need to go that long. You know, we don't need to go month and a half and, and so we didn't wanna lock it in and say the word mid. But it's got to be a reporting period sometime in that quarter.
We, we have set dates for those on the calendar, just like the report card dates that are sent home at that mid, mid progress report. Some of our schools, all of our schools have to use one of two systems, either Jupiter Grading or our parent portal. Jupiter Grading is much more efficient. That's one reason we're allowing some of the middle schools especially to go do that. It texts, emails that information as well automatically. You could go online there and put your child's, you know, information in there. And it would automatically Thursday afternoon text you all of those products.
Is it, is it appropriate or more accurate because sent home has the, you know, the picture of a, a report card or a paper coming home? Would it be appropriate to say a progress report will be provided?
That's what.
It says provided.
We've tried to send that in place when we do report cards.
The second sentence will not be there at all?
No. And that's what Mr. Oden was saying, is that rather than limit ourselves to mid-grading period, in the event they wanted to adjust that, we didn't wanna lock ourselves into that. So it will just say student progress report shall be provided at least once during each grading period.
Oh, so the second sentence won't be there?
Right.
Okay.
Our middle schools, those that are doing Jupiter, paying for it on their own, but literally you can set up Jupiter and if your child makes below an eighty, it will text you, uh, and tell you that your child just made below eighty. So pretty hard to get away with anything much with that system. And, and hopefully when we have to do the replacement and remind you again, this is the last year for STAR. There's no support after this year. That'll be a big budget item to deal with too, but the state's bid out a system. We just do not know what that might be as of today.
Anybody else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number fourteen.
Okay, it's a three point two one one, energy use and conservation. Uh, and if you'll recall, this was the policy that we adopted at our last meeting with Mr. Party was planning on applying for some grant funding. To hire an energy manager and do some other, other things with energy use and conservation. And they're in the process of doing that and, uh, those folks came back with an additional language that is at the bottom of the first page. Under the director of schools shall monitor compliance with the following, and with those two things, those are also things that require, uh, to seek that grant funding.
Can we add director of schools or designate?
Sure.
Move to adopt.
Motion, motion by Ms. Holliday and a second by Mr. Blair. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number fifteen.
Six point four zero three one, uh, and this is our head lice policy. Mrs. Delbrecht, she was our nursing supervisor, sent me a course on it back in April, indicating that more and more school systems were abolishing no-dip policies for head lice. And that that was recommended by the CDC. And her recommendation was that we do just that and she was seeking the policy change. Excerpts from their, uh, regulations that indicated that was the best course of action at this point. So when I talked with TSBA, we did their model policy, it actually had already removed the no-dip policy. So we have, what you have is, uh, on top is the current policy and the second copy is TSBA's model policy. So we have a recommending that we adopt the TSBA model policy, which would do away with the no-dip policy. It's really aimed at not keeping kids out of school. So they come back and they're checked by a healthcare person and they're free from lice, even though they may still have debts, they won't be sent home from school at that time.
Move to approve.
Motion by Ms. Holliday.
Second.
Second by Mr., Mr. Young.
Quick question. How, how big an issue is that for us now?
It comes in stages. Sometimes it's not an issue and then another time that it is, but it's very difficult to get those nets out sometimes. I mean, with those fine-toothed combs and all, but if you're also requiring them to bring in a proof that they've used it. Chances are if they're gonna tear off the box top and send it in or something like that, uh, they've probably used the, the product and then you can look and see. Basically, will you see any live infestation or not? Not to keep them out for, cause I mean, literally, I mean, many days can be involved.
Well, I think the majority of, I mean, issues that we have really revolved around nets not active. So that was the, the trend, so to speak, was to, to stop probably every kid from coming to school because that seems to be the ongoing issue.
Well, in, in the olden days, there was really not a health professional on staff that, that was qualified to do that search that we now have. So, you know, Miss First Grade Teacher was kinda put in a really bad position. And then, and I think that made safe and easy. And it made sense then. It doesn't make as much sense now.
Anybody else? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number sixteen.
Uh, six point four one one, student wellness, uh, and again, our coordinated school health person, who is accountable to the state, coordinated school health person, had also received grant funding. They recommended some policy changes, uh, starting on the first page, line eight, under commitment to coordinated school health. All schools shall implement coordinate CDC's coordinated school health approach to advantaging new and existing wellness-related programs and services in schools and the surrounding community based on state law and state board education. Coordinated school health standards, it goes on. And then on page two, on line twenty, under commitment to nutrition. School employees will limit the use of food or beverages with minimal nutritional value as rewards for academic performance or good behavior. And then lastly, at line thirty-two, under commitment to physical activity, teachers and other school personnel will not use physical activity or withhold opportunities for physical activity. I.e. P.E. or recess, recess as punishment. And then those programs are, are monitored each year and when they're monitored, they recommend changes to current policies and procedures, and these are the ones that came down this year.
But these are recommendations from our director of health services?
Well, no, our coordinated school health.
Coordinated school health. My concern is that they seem somewhat restrictive. While these may be good goals and, you know, I guess policy is intended to be restrictive. Uh, if something changes at the CDC or in some national program, we would be obligating ourselves to follow whatever their recommendation is. Without any review or, or edita- editability at our local level.
Uh, I think the section, or you're talking about the section on the first page?
Well, uh, it concerned me, yeah, all schools shall implement, you know, perhaps shall strive to implement or something of that nature that gives us a little bit of leeway. And then likewise, teachers and other school personnel will not use physical activity. I ran a lot of wind sprints, uh, you know, in, uh, after school practice or something like that. Um, you know, the, the language there is, is pretty specific that says that that cannot happen as punishment. Um, you know, if you drop a fly ball, next practice, you had wind sprints.
Is there a different point, curricular and extracurricular activity?
I mean, the coordinated school health program is curriculum related, so it's instructional day, so it doesn't apply to extracurricular. We're talking about physical activity.
That's kinda my point, those, those wind sprints that Kay had to run because Coach Hockenberry was such a mean guy, uh, was extracurricular, which, which would not be quite here yet. Oh, I'm sorry.
And one other little sentence there is, which really on, at the end of line ten, the state controls now what goes in school improvement plans. And they very well, they tell us that it's only this or that.
You're talking about page one?
Right, I mean.
We only have four pages.
Yeah, they, they shortened it and changed it and, and it may be academic, so they don't, they no longer write, um, plans that may or may not include this. It may not, in fact, it may be a template and you have to fill it out on the template. And so there may not be any place to put that. I don't know how we can.
So you, we can remove that.
I think I would, I think I would re- remove the sentence just simply because.
It says it would be included.
Yeah, because that's, the state controls those.
Everybody get that change?
Uh, which one were you taking out?
Line ten, that, that sentence that begins with the, in coordinated school health.
Provision shall be included in school improvement plans.
On this commitment to nutrition, if we have ice cream parties or things like that, would that play a bit of us from doing that? For classroom, for fund reg?
I don't think it cuts it out. It just says limit. And I mean, really that, what that is focused on is, is, you know, if your kids are, if their behavior's good for the week, then you're not giving them a candy bar. You're giving them something nasty about you. I mean, and really, I mean, those kinds of things, like ice cream parties and cookies, that stuff doesn't happen very often anymore. I mean, people bringing food in, that kinda stuff. But I mean, if it was something that school had organized as a, an ice cream party, I don't think it prevents you from doing that. It's just saying as much as possible, use nutritional foods rather than junk. Something about, you know, the candies and stuff that, um, good behavior, they might not do that anymore.
We shouldn't limit that.
I'm sorry, we.
Should not limit certain rewards. Now, the word, I mean, the ambiguous part is that employers will limit. That may mean you don't do it all the time. It's how a person chooses the word to interpret the word limit.
Yeah, that one has, that one has some leeway. You know, it expresses a commitment to health and education and, and, and nutrition. Uh, and yet it gives a little leeway. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm more comfortable with that one than I am the other two because the other two are absolute.
Yeah, the limit thing bothers me from a legal standpoint. If you, if you give someone a cookie one day, I don't wanna get sued for giving someone a cookie.
Exactly.
They say we're violating our policy because we're not adhering to our own policy. Cause when you say limit, I mean, what does that mean?
Don't do it every day or don't do it every week.
Right, it's very subjective. See, my, I don't know, if you wanna say, you know, school employees strive to use healthy nutritional snacks as rewards, I think, you know, that will be better than saying limit.
I don't think I would really have lines twenty through twenty-two other than the last sentence or something. I don't know.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. The legal standpoint is better to take twenty and twenty-one out.
I, that's my thought.
Well, and we can do that. I don't know how that will impact what her requirements are. So, I mean, I'll submit it that way and if it's.
We don't wanna cut her out of funding, that's the thing.
Right, right.
I mean, and that, just, just for explanation purposes, that is the point of the coordinated school health program at the state level and the local level. Is to essentially eliminate, um, over time, the use of those kinds of practices. So that, as, as was lots of other things in education, since we have them the majority of the day, we are promoting healthy habits. We are promoting exercise, physical activity and not doing things that, uh, are to the detriment of those things. So we could, I mean, we certainly could submit it that way and prove it if the problem can be right back.
The way you stated that, you can use whatever you need to use and stay out of trouble. You choose to do it. You didn't say you're wrong about building it. Maybe you don't do it as much as you used to.
Right.
Would you say, maybe you could do it, but now you're doing more.
Is the cafeteria a pleasant environment? I, I just, I don't try to be legalistic here, but it, some of the wording kinda.
Which section?
I'm twenty-one. Students will be given extra time to enjoy healthy meals and relax in a pleasant environment. That's real subjective.
Yeah, I think.
From a legal standpoint.
Lawyer's standpoint, I would take that out as well.
The whole sentence?
Yes. I think good nutritional habits shall be encouraged is okay.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
You what, Jeff?
The last sentence of that paragraph is okay. Good, where it says, good nutritional habits shall be encouraged. I think that's okay.
That's your gift.
Right.
Is there a problem with, uh, sentence thirty-two that starts on thirty-one? About using, taking the one recess sentence or not getting work done?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I don't know about sentence, that last one that we talked about, about limiting physical activity. At thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three, I think from a legal standpoint, I probably would take it out. Cause that would, if you restrict it from recess, it could be an issue. If coaches, I know we're thinking this may just be during classroom time, but that's not what it really says here. If coaches make them go and run laps for not playing well or be misbehaving, then that will be a violation of this policy potentially. I don't think it's our intent to disallow that. I don't think. Maybe it is, but.
I don't, I'm with you. I've got some issues.
So I might would take out that last sentence under the commitment to physical activity, which would be line thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three.
Most of the time if you're a teacher and you got recess at an elementary school, sometimes they're not, they, they haven't finished their work. You're taking them out when the, the rest of the class is going out. They're bringing their books out to finish it during that recess time, cause they didn't do it during class time, cause they would have recess during class.
Right. I don't, I don't think you wanna tie your hands with respect to that. I don't, I don't think you want to tie your hands when you're stretching that.
How much, how much of this is actually state wording?
How much is what?
State, the wording from the state.
This came, this came from the coordinated school health office and state. They need to be changed.
One, one of the purpose of these last sentences, to, to make sure that the kids get all the gifts right there that they need to get. So if you take it out, are you in violation of, will you be violating the, the state policy to prevent them from getting necessary physical activity?
Well, I mean, they already have requirements to revise that require, you know, physical activity that's required, like, as a part of the curriculum and instructional day. This is just saying, this section is really just saying what Ms. Blain said, which is referring to, rather than taking away their recess time, which is their opportunity for physical activity, we'll come up with something else as a punishment. I mean, that's the point of that section. But, I, I mean, again, these are just changes that they've recommended, we can leave the policy as it is and let them know, and if they come back and say, we're, we're going to cut your funding if you don't make those changes, or let's work at it this way, then, you know, I can always bring it back.
So make those changes, basically, is what you're saying, we revert back to this.
Right, I mean, we'd stay as is.
Come back to this.
Right.
I guess worst case scenario, they just tell us we're wrong, we have to come back to this, I guess.
So how about, I'm not clear on thirty-one through thirty-three. Is it stay or not stay, where are we saying?
Well, I was just, it goes out, it gets deleted.
Well, and I mean, I think you, you've, you've eliminated the, all of the changes that, that were recommended on page two of the policy. So my suggestion would be that we eliminate the first change as well and just leave it like it is and see where, where we are.
So it hasn't really been submitted to them for review yet?
No, they gave her recommendations and she sent them to me and then I incorporated them in this and then after, after whatever happens, we'll send back and say, you know, this is what we have and see what, what happens.
Rather than a change to board policy, it may be appropriate for the board to approve a one-year commitment to these goals that would be less binding and, you know, could have some more passive language and wouldn't be as problematic on a legal standing. It could, it could address to coordinated school health that we're committed to these goals and yet we're evaluating on an annual basis and we're not changing something that's as lasting as our, as our board policy.
I guess, I guess the question I would have, if something happened in that year's time.
Well, I think we'll just have to ask and see, you know, what, what, I, I don't think, I mean, at least I'm not familiar with coordinated school health program because I have not dealt with that, but at least in, like with Mr. Cardy's recommendations and when we get recommendations from other departments about policy changes, OCR, those kinds of things, they're, they are required policy changes. So I don't know if that will work or not, but we'll just have to see that.
Because this policy was just enacted last year?
It was revised last year.
Well, I think find out if it's federally mandated and if mandated and affects our funding, we can reconsider it.
I, I really would be interested to see, especially for that last one, whether, whether that would be held to the curriculum or the extracurricular, I mean, extracurricular is, is clearly a different animal in, in regards to that. I mean, I, there's not a, there's not a coaching situation I can think of where that would be not detrimental to what they're trying to accomplish if you weren't able to find some, some way to make that work.
When you make a difference, it said K two six, what are you talking about, usually happening?
Well, I hadn't read that part of it, so you're right, if, if we're only dealing with case or six, then, then it takes that out, takes that out of play. A little bit.
Procedurally, is it appropriate for the policy committee to act on this in order to keep it before the board? Or versus taking no action if, you know, is, is there anything there that would give you time to take a look at it and yet it would come in a first reading as a non-recommended motion or something like that and we could consider it again at the board and keep this moving? Is there anything to be done there?
I, I think these, all can come as recommendations from the policy committee to the board, and the board decides to act differently than the committee in regards to any particular policy, I think that could be, the board would have discretion to do that.
I just don't think that this committee would necessarily be inclined to recommend this particular policy revision. Does it stay on the agenda if it comes with a recommendation not to approve? And then the board could act differently?
I think it's okay for the board to take it out if the board chooses to do it, even if it's not recommended by this committee. So that will give us leeway in the event, we do find this is federally mandated to reconsider that, we need to at a board level.
Is it equally acceptable for the committee to make no recommendation?
That's fine as well, yes.
Okay. I move to the next item.
Okay, so that's six point two zero four, intended for non-resident students.
So for the record, we're saying no recommendation on this one?
Policy number seventeen.
No change.
Okay.
Okay, I'm six point two zero four. And this came up in some discussions that Mr. Evans and Mr. Odom and I had, and in looking at this policy, in the board rule, remember, we, we looked at this probably two policy meetings ago and we were talking about granting zone exemptions to children of classified employees and we made some revisions. So where you look at line nineteen under number one, where it says employee request will be considered based on available space at the request at your zone school, that had, when we changed it before, that said teacher. Corrected to say employee because some of this will apply to classified folks as well. And the same thing in section two, the child must attend the school at which the parent is employed. We, we said the child, the, the school at which the parent is teaching. So this was really just a clean up to go back and correct that what we intended to do, we just left out those two sections. So this would change that from teacher to employee.
Some move.
Take it.
Motion by Mr. Blair and a second by Mr. Tackett, any further discussion on this? All in favor of say aye? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Policy one point four zero seven, school board records. This is brought to you based on a letter and some information that Mr. Odom received from Chuck Cagle, recommending some additions and changes to our records policy, which we have previously not from TSBA. And there are several sections, starting on line three, any citizen, I'm sorry, on two, any citizen of Tennessee, state official or other authorized person shall be permitted, and this is what's added, upon written request to the system's public information officer, delivered in person or via U.S. mail at a reasonable time to inspect our records maintained by the district and then on down to line five, the last sentence, email requests will not be accepted as a valid open records request. Then pulling down to line eight, second sentence, the requister may be required to pay the cost of copies and/or the cost of labor required to fulfill their request among other reasonable charges that may be incurred. The charges shall be calculated at the rate prescribed by the schedule of reasonable charges as produced by the Tennessee Office of Open Records Council from time to time amended that the board hereby adopts and incorporates here in those scheduled charges. And then goes on to give that web address, then line seventeen, when the total number of requests made by a requister within a calendar month exceeds four, but the time to produce the record requested at each time is less than one hour threshold necessary to charge a reasonable fee, the board may begin to charge the requister a fee for any and all labor that is reasonably necessary to produce the copy or the requesting request as to informing the requister that the aggregation limit has been met. Further, the names of persons inspecting records and the date of installation shall be reported. And those were, like you said, there was a memo, some information sent from Chuck Cagle, who represents the Tennessee School Board Supervision Association, that these changes be made, they, we've all kind of been dealing with some excessive open records requests and so I think he just went back and looked at, you know, if we're all consistent and charge the same amount and really adhere to what the law says or requires us to do, then we, then we'll kind of all be in better, in better shape, so.
If you remember at the legal conference, he said there were cases where people from out of state to do, where requesting information was taken lots of times to do, that may or may not have a particular interest. And he said Tennessee code said people in the state may request, you know, so this is clean up to correct some of those things that we heard up there in, in Gatlinburg really.
Second.
So a motion by Mr. Young and a second by Mr. Holliday, any further discussion? All in favor of say aye? Any opposed? Motion passes, number twenty.
And this one is adoption of a new policy, six point four zero nine one, title of sexual misconduct. This came, if, if you remember, Mr. Hodgins, the people that run our committee for the bus contract, we got into discussion about adding uninsured motorists coverage and additional coverage to the bus contract. The carrier who is going to be providing that coverage is requiring that we have a policy on sexual misconduct. We submitted the policies that we already have about reporting and child abuse and those sorts of things and really what they were looking for was a, a policy that says, you know, we don't tolerate it, we're not going to allow it, we require you to report. Employees or volunteers who engage in this misconduct will be disciplined and will be reported to the law enforcement as appropriate. So it takes some of our other policies and, and formulates all of that stuff into one and then adds the requirements that we don't tolerate that sort of thing. Which we don't and we haven't, but again, it's not something that really, really have an option about.
Does this be included in the handbook, listed in handbook?
Anybody got any questions? Move, get approved. Second. A motion by Mr. Tackett, a second by Mr. Blair, any further discussion? All in favor of say aye? Any opposed? Anybody else? Mr. Tackett?
Just a reminder to the board, special call meeting for next Tuesday evening prior to the work sessions we have for the purpose of reviewing the Tracy Darnell Montessori Academic Charter School resubmission review. One item agenda.
Okay, reach four forty-five, correct? Anybody else? Again, Mr. McFatt, I'd like to thank you for the job you did on this and most everybody can see it's a lot of work, getting everything compiled and keeping everything in order and everything, so I just want to say thank, thank you for that. Anything else? Word turn.